The orders around commission. Do you generally pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So certainly a day of infamy in our country and our pledge is more important than patriotism. It's more relevant today than any in our past. Eightieth anniversary of Pearl Harbor. So December 7th. Good morning, Adam. Sorry, I meant. You're okay.
And major pledge.
To give him a support. A major pledge.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. They have major pledges.
Some tropical, some winter storm like major flooding.
So the first item on our agenda this morning is board reorganization. Happened the first meeting in December. And I'm not sure if we opened things up for chairman. Is that correct? We'll accept nominations for chairman for the upcoming twenty-two calendar year of meetings. Beginning today. On Halloween, Lucas. Have a nomination for Lucas.
Second?
No.
For no second?
Well.
Just take a nomination.
Take your nominations. Sorry. Have any further nominations? Any further nominations? And if not, a motion cast unanimous ballot.
So.
Second. All those in favor of Commissioner Wakefield becoming chairman signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The gavel is yours, Mr. Wakefield.
Oh, boy. Now, now we're in for some of the.
We'll. Thank you very much. Stay here. For today, you might want to move this over here. Uh, it's really good. Paperwork, paperwork. Am I taking yours or?
No, just me and yours are out. It's got everybody's name.
Make sure it's all.
They're all adjusted to everyone's.
We need a nomination for vice chairman. Uh, do we have any nominees for vice chairman?
I'll nominate Commissioner Brown.
Commissioner Brown?
Oh, I will go. I don't want to fall on my head. What?
Okay, we now have two nominees for vice chairman. Are there any further nominees for vice chairman?
Come on, Ed.
Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations?
I moved that nomination ceased, so we cast unanimous ballot for Mr. Wakefield.
Oh, come on.
A second. Okay, a motion in a second.
As you're gonna flip.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. We thank you for your service, Commissioner.
How about getting here late? That was something else that caused it.
No.
Maybe getting here late would put you on something.
I'd play the fall out there.
That's a good, that's a good point.
Okay, so next on the agenda is assignment of portfolios. Uh, I assume that Commissioner Frith and I have some training back and forth to do, although uh, we can do it however.
Were these, all the motions and the stuff that you sent out? I remember reading it, I guess, maybe I did.
Yeah, it's sent out like a list of everything.
Yeah. I'll make, uh, does anybody have anything that they'd like to change out of, I guess? Seeing none, but we'll make it easy. I'll make the motion that we keep everything the same except flip Commissioner Wakefield and Commissioner Frith.
As long as you guys are okay.
As long as you guys are okay with that.
Okay. So the only change then would be that Commissioner Frith would have the sheriff and tax director as his portfolio. And I would take audit or give the resource emergency manager and veteran service. Okay?
Do we have that job?
Did we get a second on that?
I'll say.
Okay, with a motion in a second to that, that effect, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. We've got our portfolios. And next on the agenda is approval of the minutes of last meeting. Do I second?
Shut up.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, the motion is carried. Bills. Anything work?
Yeah, there should be an additional.
And then with the whole second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve payment of the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried.
Full call.
Well, is that a?
You can watch.
Oh, my goodness.
Caught you right away.
Unbelievable, unbelievable. Somebody get this chairman out here. Okay, well, yes, we'll call, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Light on?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I'm gonna get a train, a retraining, re- Frith?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye. Okay, we did it.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, financial reports.
Are you all ready, Danny?
We are good. We are going to wait until we get a majority of the bills for this month to see where we're at to transfer, transfer money to those accounts. Some of the LAC and.
See what we're handed about that?
Yeah. Yeah, that's deep.
And we don't have.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve financial report.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve financial reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried.
Or we'll call the parent.
It's usually.
Okay, next is approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or changes to the agenda that need to be made? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as listed?
Sure moved.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. We'll move on to extension. It looks like we have our lovely ladies here, so please take it away.
Okay, so we just have a little update from extension. We, just last week, we had a really fun kind of community class, outdoor winter arrangement class, and we had a really good turnout. We had twenty-four people join us in person and thirty-two people picked up the go kits. And they thought it'd be creative, kinda like our 4H program, but they learned a little bit about the wintergreen. So we taught them a little bit about trees and so we love to throw that educational piece in there as well. Uh, we are currently with extension. We're in the state program planning process and um, both Cindy and I are actively taking a role. As Lindsay gets her feet wet, she'll be joining more too, but this kinda helps to shape the programs that the state does for programs. So both Cindy and I are on the 4H program planning teams and I'm on a food nutrition team. And Lindsay will be joining, joining some A and R teams as well, but that process is going very well. So we kind of like to take a look at what our county needs as well and throw that input into the state. Uh, so we like to take an active role in that. Um, uh, we're excited that we have eight Ramsey County youth that are going to be attending. It's called ALAW. The Leadership Awareness Weekend, only it's on a Wednesday today, so they're calling it Leadership Awareness Wednesday, Wednesday. And um, this year the kids are going to be in Morton County and they're going to learn about county government. Uh, so maybe we'll have some future county commissioners in that group. Uh, but they're, they're actually gonna go down early and our Ramsey County kids are, I'm so excited for them because they're going to be actually visiting the dairy in Carrington. They're gonna go to the food co-op in Bismarck. Um, and they're gonna volunteer at the Great Plains Food Bank. And then they're also gonna take a capital tour and they're gonna visit the Heritage Center. So we're excited that these kids will get a chance to.
Very busy day.
Yeah, actually, this is grade seven and up.
Sir, what age group is that?
Yeah, so we'll, any grade seven and up, so, yeah.
How many kids are going?
We have eight Ramsey County kids, um, which I believe is, we have the county that's representing the most kids. So we're, we just have such an active group. So we're, we're really excited for these kids. Not all the counties are doing all these extra tours, so um, yeah, they're really, yeah.
I like to see the dairy out. I think I go see this.
Yeah, yeah, so Captain G in Morton County, sometimes he'll be, um, he'll actually join the legislative process and um, when it's in session, um, they've been to the, the law school in Grand Forks. So they kinda make a rotation. So it'll be a little bit different if the county, county government is here.
Well, there's some pretty interesting legislative interim committees going on today and tomorrow, so.
Jump in and watch.
Yeah, they could jump in and watch one of ours. They can even do that via video.
Yeah, and Lindsay has a few things that she wanted to add as well.
Yeah, we have Ranchers Night Out, um, which is this Thursday at the Sail Barn. Um, that's, that's. Meeting supper, free, free supper is at five PM and then meeting is at six. We're covering pasture and grazing readiness, for example, and stretching forages to meet your cows' needs this winter. Um, and then we also have, um, of course roundup coming up, January fourth and fifth. Uh, so we've all, we welcome you to join that. We have a, you know, as usual, a pretty full, um, two days of a lot of different topics, um, which you can see in your program. And um, also have Ranchers Night Out if anyone wants to join. And um, just got the newsletter, um, printed this morning for you guys, just kinda covering, um, topics that are coming up, some pesticide trainings, um, in one in February and one in March. So covers all that important information. Um, so that is what the egg side is doing, uh, so far in a month.
Lindsay's been busy. She's getting her feet wet for sure.
Yeah, have you been settling in a lot?
Yeah, working on trying to adjust to yesterday stepping out and I'm like, oh, I tried to.
Oh, it'll get worse, don't worry. It's just kinda early this year, but it's kinda cool. But it was, we had a little mild weather last year, so maybe we'll get what we need.
Well, we're really, really glad to see you're off and put the ground running, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, so join us for roundup. Yeah, it's been live this, this, this year, it was virtual last year, so um, we're bringing all of the good food. This year as well, Cindy is getting all the food ordered this week, so.
Big selling point.
Free, yeah. And a lot of the networking, I think that's kinda what everybody misses, in-person visiting, yeah.
Was there anything else from extension?
Would you like, uh, and I think we've done this in the past, is um, the understanding and agreement to open up the courthouse in between the memorial building and that.
Yeah, if that would be possible, good reminder.
I, I think that would be pertinent since we have sessions down in the basement as well over in the memorial building and people are.
Yeah, then they can kinda.
Yeah, yeah, that would set a different room, set around the program.
Yeah, if that is possible for those.
I'd make that a motion.
Second, second.
We have a motion in a second for during roundup opening up the, the doors between the memorial building and the courthouse. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Thanks for remembering that, yeah. Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you much, appreciate it.
Beth, what?
Good morning. I wanted to start the new update. Uh, thank you for allowing me to attend the state fair annual meeting. Uh, Cindy and I wanted to for quite a few years. Uh, every, most years my family spends five to six days on site of the fair. Also on the fair board with the county, Lives Act Committee, Fair Building Committee, Fair Foundation, and the Portlater. So all of those things are important and being able to meet some of the people that who've been in touch with us and now have a contact. Awesome. It was a great year for us to have someone there. Um, it was a year of our district, which were District Four, had to elect a new director. Um, our district includes Benson, Eddie Pierce, Ramsey, Relent, and Tom and Tommies. Since nineteen ninety-two, Connie Hansen's been our director. Fabulous. We're lucky that she did agree to do it again. So she, um, so we were able to vote her in. Um, she, you know, has always been saying lately, you know, if there's somebody that really is passionate about wanting to do this and she would definitely, um, allow that if that was the case, but she's just done a great job. There hasn't been anyone else to step up that said that they wanted to step up for that position. Uh, Ramsey County 4H had five hundred eighty-three 4H entries this year at the fair. And just to give you an idea, um, where that comes in, Nelson County had eighty-five. Benson's around two hundred. So our, our extension is doing a great job and we're probably very busy, um, with 4H program. Eight attendance for the fair was over three hundred and two thousand, uh, which is quite, I think I looked at, looked like about four highs here, um, in history that they have written down. And um, they seemed that everything went well. I know they, they mentioned that they really struggled, um, before the fair getting help, like everywhere. So in the end, their people had to just work longer and harder, but I was there and heard them, and all of a sudden changed, so they definitely worked hard. Um, they mentioned that their concert sales were down some or the attendance, and they don't know if that's just because of the lineup or because of COVID, but their food sales were up by forty percent, so people are eating. I thought that was funny.
Plus people showed up at April.
Yeah, they have, they did that. And then also, um, one thing to mention, they have a fair foundation and other fair foundation offers, um, six one thousand dollar scholarships to 4H members. And my daughter was going to one of them this year, so that was awesome. They've also teamed up with Hess Corporation last year and they re-do the business next year. And Hess gives away three ten thousand dollar scholarships and five two thousand dollar scholarships through the fair foundation. Uh, they did last year and they will redo that one this year. So it's really great that they can do that, those 4H kids are sure to stay. So really, um, that is what I had on the fair meeting. If you have any other questions, if you are too.
Thank Beth for stepping in for me.
Yeah, no.
Appreciate it.
No, I really did enjoy it. It was, it was fun to see everybody and they, oh, the funniest thing, so the first person gives up, gets up to give their speech and they're recording 4H program and a large screen behind them and a picture says 4H. And I look up and my daughter Charlie is home. I go, well, that's great. So then like a lot of the next person's giving something I had to report, and there's my mom. And then the foundation gets them, there's my daughter Molly, and I'm like, oh my gosh, my family's just everywhere.
You guys are, you guys are photo dead.
Yeah, I put me on, I looked.
They do your company.
Yeah, but yeah, so that's funny.
That's great.
It all.
Good, thank you for going.
Yeah, it was a good day. And then, um, since I'm here, I can just give you a quick update on some things going on in the office. We just sent out two hundred and ninety-four of our residents' applications again. So hopefully during the apple play this year should be smooth since it was kinda changed last year. So now people will be more familiar with those changes and, and that. Um, we had a soils and agricultural land audit this year, got a state of product and passed it without any problems at all. So that was full and easy. Um, we had looked into, one of the things with, um, our agricultural evaluations is it's done with soil type and PIs, sort of activity art index. And we haven't updated that for a few years and it's time that we look into that. So Steve and I are looking at that. We don't have to do it all in one year. We can use two years to make it work out, something like that. Um, just kind of our preliminary numbers, if we did do those updates, the largest decrease would be someone would think the, that is at least increase. Decrease, the highest increase would be, you know, twelve percent, um, ranging more around a three percent. Uh, we do wanna do that, so we're in compliance if we ever get out of it again, you know.
When was the last time you did it?
Ten years ago, forget it. We didn't even terminate it, so it's time to look into it.
So does, does the PI change or does, is it more of a, the soil type change because of saturation or something like that? Or what, what causes the change in the decrease in increase?
Me not, me as soil scientist, my idea on it is they've added some new soil types over the last ten years. And then they have updated the PI value.
Okay, so they, they've determined that maybe a.
They were.
Camberly loam or whatever, instead of being a seventy-six as a seventy-four or something like that, okay?
And so, so we'll wanna do that. Like I said, it doesn't have to be done in one year, it can go over two years. So mostly waiting to see where we come in plans with the state and.
One question, they added new soil types, you said? How do they do this?
Yeah, I think by.
I think.
No, I think, I think all the, I think all the tech, no, I don't, for certain, but I'm guessing all of the technology they use now with the web soil survey and everything like that, I mean, all the old stuff, we're probably still based, I would guess, off of the old maps.
The original.
When they actually went out and dipped fields and then they put the, the maps together, but now they got a web soil survey where I think they could probably use infrared and all kinds of stuff to determine what kind of soil types, because you've got ECs and penetrations and all that kind of stuff.
When we.
I don't know for certain, but I would guess there's some, that has something to do with it.
Yeah, when we set up, we use the, the original soil maps.
You do.
Yeah, those maps are very good, but.
It's amazing. When you look at aerial.
Considering that they did it all by, yeah.
Drawing and say, how did they sit up on a hill and do that?
They took tests and then took aerials and put it all back together. It's quite amazing they did as well as they did.
I still don't understand how they can improve soils, you know?
I think a lot of it though is what they've been growing over the years to improve and decrease soil.
Well, that probably has part of it too, yeah.
Some spots just don't.
You can do everything in the world, they don't matter.
Literally, I think the best thing.
That's interesting, though, I didn't, I didn't even know they went through a re-also.
Well, we'll look forward to getting more information from you on, on that process.
Yeah, we will as it goes out. Um, and looking into this, you know, we're just finishing up the sales ratio, we'll finish up after we get a December sale. Um, and a little more on what will happen there. But based on just the market, residential sales are really strong in the prices this past year. Lot of upper level home are being sold for, um, for on value. So we may see some changes in the residential, probably in county, at Devil's Lake. With that said, the city assessors retired for Devil's Lake also in April. I haven't heard what their funds are over there. And, um, we're being possibly a new tax commissioner after the first of the year, so we'll see all that. Does that release any changes? And I guess that's, I know, that's all I have from our office.
Thanks, Beth.
Morning. Morning. So I need the, I finished for vehicles and just I just need to approve one. They're all after below even the state bid prices, so uh, things have gone up considerably. Um, the one I'm looking at is the Durango. From.
I'm telling.
Well, I was telling, uh, whatever the name of it is now, like hey, uh.
There's two of them there, which one are you looking at?
Which one are you looking at?
You have one for.
Thirty-six, eight bid price?
Oh, okay.
And the, the first one in the packet is the pickup, correct? It says.
The one from Marketplace Ford.
Yeah, twenty-twenty-two fifteen crew.
Yeah.
That's Dodge pickup and then there's the, the Durango Pursuit.
Thirty-nine thousand and the thirty-six thousand minus the Durango.
Yeah, looks correct.
Yeah, and that's that. If you look on the state bid, they bid out two Durangos, one has the Emmy, one has a three-six. We always bid out the three-six because we don't want to eat that. That's about three eighty thousand dollars now. I think the four F one fifty for Marketplace was thirty-seven. Okay?
Yeah, thirty-seven, eight, seventy-nine.
So the whole bid is the Durango for Dodge from Chrysler Center. Okay, thirty-six, three, forty-eight, I think it is, something like that. Where does, that's the one that'll work? Yeah. I will do that.
Okay, we have a, do you second, Adam?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion to approve the, the low bid, which is a twenty-twenty-two Durango Pursuit, uh, vehicle from the Devil's Lake Chrysler Center. Uh, and the low bid is thirty-six thousand, three forty-six. Any further discussion?
Is it just the one of them?
Two.
Two this year, that's right.
You can total them.
I'm pretty sure we're doing two.
Well, then multiply that number with two. And it's the same vehicle for multiple. Yeah, identical vehicle, yeah, it's two of them.
You've had each and for us.
Yes. And then there's gonna be cost putting everything onto them. Different than any other thing we do.
Yeah.
Light bar radio.
Light bar striping, radios, in-car video systems.
Yep. There'll be another ten grand on top for.
It's running about five.
Five, okay.
But that's why we keep them longer, so we eliminate a little bit of that expense every couple of years. So we keep that down, so we keep them about four years. So instead of trading off two, we're, we're saving that. It's five grand no matter what I switch it, whether it's two years or four, so we can kinda extend that and save some money by keeping our vehicles longer. And we're not having any issues with any of the vehicles we've had in the last. Let's hope not. Eight years. I think we can get through this next year, I think you're gonna see some. Well, and my concern is they're about six grand more, seven, five grand more than what I budgeted. Because I went on last year, then I just added a couple thousand dollars. I think I budgeted thirty-two, so, you know, that's my concern is it's higher than what I actually budgeted, so I'm gonna have to offset through the year or about.
Yeah, we can always post it.
But we don't have much choice.
It's so married, yeah.
Yeah, posting COVID dollars over or whatever, from the original COVID money we got.
And the other caveat, I have till five o'clock today to order them ready, because they closed the bid today.
Oh.
You know, we on Thursday have told you that.
Metaphor.
I know, which is funny, I'll just thank God the meeting was today and I got a chance to do that.
I'm sure their bid pricing is, they don't give you sixty days or something anymore because they have to move it so quick that, well, anyway.
We haven't got.
Okay, so we had a motion and I can't remember who made it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to allow the sheriff to take the low bid on the, uh, two Durangos. All those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice, uh, update on most of what I have to jail tomorrow.
Well, the state will be in and doing their inspection, which will be going through basically our, our, uh, cell checks of this regular daily business duties. And, uh, they've been working hard on, we've, captain had resigned and then he was gone, so we moved some people back down to key positions, hopefully that staff, uh, the main problem is our young staff. But, uh, so, so now that we've kind of got, we've had a couple of weeks for, we've almost canceled the last one. And then we've got things kinda short up where we see some holes and hopefully we'll be. What we're, what they're looking for today or tomorrow is to increase us some. We won't be back to a hundred percent tomorrow or after that. Um, but we're hoping to be back to close to seventy, which will, and then what I've been told is tomorrow's inspection will be to make sure we have the policies and procedures and, procedures in place to move forward. So then six months from now will be the big inspection, we'll be expected to be in compliance.
For the hundred percent.
Huh?
For the hundred percent.
Yes, so then after the, it'll be a hundred or five months or whatever it is from. So then at that point, when they inspect us, which is the normal inspection in July, uh, we'll expect it to be in compliance and then they'll be back to full, right? But we can get back to that seventy, eighty, where, where that's about to break even more. It seems.
Pretty much states, Carol, or local.
Yeah, it's a zero, you're not, you're not moving, you're not making money, but you're not losing money. Uh, it's kind of a zero balance. That eighty-one, eighty-two, right around in there.
Yeah.
So we can get close to that, we're doing much better.
And we're not worried about they having a forty-nine kind of going into a weekend. And, and we're not worried about, they having a forty nine coming, going into a weekend and.
We worried about that, but we're actually been dealing with that for the last two weeks, you know?
We're right up against the cap when we go into the weekend, everywhere we do, yeah.
But we've, we've been calling and, and keeping in contact with them and making sure that we have a plan about reduce. Uh, for example, yesterday we were at fifty five. Well, two got out for courts, we're down to fifty three. We're taking another one to the pen here tomorrow, so we're down to fifty two. Um, so it's a constant. Yeah, it's a constant that, we need to be higher than what we are, we just can't, we can't stay at that fifty. Uh, and with the COVID, no other jails really want any further. Cause they don't wanna infect or have a chance, so we're struggling trying to find a place to make it. If they're old, so. Uh, yeah, but I think it's moving forward. Probably not the pace we want to, but it is moving forward, we're not, we're not stuck and we're not standing.
Like Steve said, we moved some people out and put in a jail and I think we've got great people there and there's just help, so. Only do is give it a try.
Well, we had to do something.
Yeah, gotta get up a track.
Yeah, we have to do something, so now we're, we're moving and we'll go from there.
Isn't today Rod meeting with college on that field, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
But so.
Hopefully they know a lot more.
I'm gonna try to attend that one as well, just to.
Yeah.
Well, so then maybe I can get the Sheriff's Association statewide involved, because it affects all of them as well, cause if they have access to that training, I mean, that's huge.
Yeah.
I mean, it'd be highly beneficial, not just for us, it'd be beneficial for.
It's just for us.
Yeah, I know.
So far, but if I can, you know, once we get it to the, I can maybe push the college, they'd say, hey, let's get, you know, get this, that, our call Sheriff's Association involved, cause. Every county is having this problem.
Yeah.
Uh, Minot put on a school and they had one of their people signed up to go to it. And they got sick of it, and so the house posted it for six, six other agencies. We're losing money, it wasn't even their own people getting the training, but they had the training. So they're talking about not having it anymore, uh, Gas County's struggling and they're the two big ones that kind of been doing it. Grand Forks struggles with it, so we, we need something and, and we're on the right track, we need to do this somehow. Um, so anyway.
Rumor has it the captain administrator of Gas County, he's already retired, correct, right?
Well.
He's, uh, not happy with.
They, Gas County eliminated their training officer position and dumped it all on the captain of the jail, uh. So he was the guy that was running their academy, so now all those duties are dumped onto the captain of the jail, which is Andy. Um, and that's too much. You know, we're running so short, then too many things on too many people, they're just, I don't know, but.
Well, yeah, he's already trying to run a deal that's what, two twenty or something like that, or even more than that now, two seventy and then.
They're gonna throw a war on that team, but they're only doing about two hundred, so.
Only, that's enough.
They have a whole way they haven't even opened yet.
But.
I mean, that's a lot.
It is a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you think about it, even for Devil's Lake, when we're at Fortumbassy, we're at a hundred and one, a hundred and two.
That's a lot.
But you know what, there's a lot of times we were at that or hired. Uh, because we had that say. And here's the problem with our inmate counts is the people are committing crimes that are huge and you can't just let go. And that's why we have trouble keeping below the fifty. I mean, people were doing drugs, so much drug stuff, you know, and it's not, it's. Big, or you can't let them go.
It's not somebody just in a little bit of possession or something.
Yeah, they just have a little bag, it's something, oh.
Something big, it's, yeah, yeah.
Uh.
Not small anymore.
Not a user anymore, it's a seller, yeah.
It's both.
Both, but I mean, it's the big stuff.
Well, they just got one here, I don't know if they're ready for me to lease it or not, but they just got one at our motel, they got seven grand cash and four hundred bills, oxy bills. Out of motel.
Well, you know, when we bought, when we last, the old band building was probably a week after we bought it, there was renter there.
That was last week.
And, uh, we got detectives from the city called and said, hey, we gotta go kick down this door.
Yeah.
They found twenty grand.
Yeah.
In that one.
So I mean, and that, that's, so that's, so what do you do with that, that guy goes to jail and we aren't letting him go for a month. You know, that's, that's a huge plus for our gas, of course, they got it, but you don't want that guy back in the street, you know?
Life risk and everything else.
Yeah, you got a lot of money going on.
Hey.
We, we did a pretty favorable tomorrow that felt crazy, at least Saturday.
We're hoping sixty five or seventy, we're hoping.
I would add the contact with Lance Anderson.
Well, I've always been in contact with him.
Yeah, I've been contacting him.
Yeah. Well, we have to call every day we're over at, over the fifty, so you can talk to them pretty much daily, so.
So we're looking forward to that. I think it works.
Well, how long out after the inspection do, are they gonna give us, uh, if we're there or not?
They'll probably do it immediately.
They'll probably do it in a, uh, they'll probably have a meeting with, uh, the commission, a couple of commissioners and Rob and I, and then they'll, they'll probably tell us.
Okay, and then they'll.
And then they'll give us a time and a date, and then, uh, they'll do it officially, then next week, so.
Okay. Okay, I was like, is that like a month long process or something?
No, it shouldn't take.
Okay.
You already have to wait for them to talk, it's pretty much picking up a body action there.
Yeah. Usually.
You know, pretty quick, huh?
Yeah.
The scowls are the child.
Oh, yes.
Well, keep us, keep us up to date on the echoes and also with, uh, CO training, I mean, it sounds to me like we have a lineup at the door from all across the state.
Yeah.
They get that going, so.
I, I really think we're gonna have to partner up with the college.
Until, at least until we get it up and running, and then I think it'll be like the P O D, the, the piece officer training after. They'll start, they'll start to realize that they can actually fund it and make some money and then, then they can take it over, but the initial startup, I think, they're a little gun shy with it.
I agree.
If, if, if what it takes is us getting a little bit of money at the pod to get the startup going, I think that's a.
That's, that's a huge part, but I think we need to continue with that, just to get it started.
Yeah.
Because once we start it, like I said, they can offer it, just like they do the piece officer training. You know, they're here in the fall, they're at Grand Forks, they're in Minot, they're in Fargo, Fargo did their own now, but they're still moving it and they can move this around. Their instructor just go with it, you know, you can go to Fargo, they have a class, you go to Minot, they have a class. Uh, so I think it's a.
It's cheaper to run that instructor around than it is to run.
Great officers, absolutely.
Yeah. It is, it's either do pay motel rooms and everything else for an instructor than it is for ten, ten to twelve people at a firm training.
We did the same thing for our training.
It's just not feasible to send twenty people. It's not.
No, it'll definitely pay dividends.
Yeah, that's, they don't get some.
So we just need to keep pushing it hard, but you can't push it through.
Yeah, we put our money.
I have, I have faith that you're worth the money. Um, okay, is there anything else?
No, I have nothing else to.
Sure.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Karen.
All right. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at new pickup also this year. And, uh, the state bids for the pickup I'm looking for, I'm looking for three quarter ton crew cab. You can no longer order three quarter ton or bigger or pickups, but you can get it as. So, and Jeremy Ted told me this and I called the, the people that were awarded the bid and they said the same thing. Nobody's able to order anything for here than that.
They're not naming.
I'm naming them.
Just, just for this year, just cause they can't get stuff for them, huh?
Yep.
Interesting.
So can you go out and get the? The H D fifteen hundred with the diesel now, that shuttleway and.
I didn't ask about that.
Because, you know, they just came out with that new diesel, but I think you can get it in the H D, so you'll get all the three quarter ton axles and stuff. And then that bumps your tranny to the ten speed and then you get that diesel. And the only reason I know it is, cause I was pricing well, they're literally only eight hundred dollars more than the gas.
For diesel?
Yep.
Really?
And when you trade it in, they're giving you thirty six hundred dollars more than a gas.
Well, yeah. A diesel market, it's usually four or five.
Because it's a. They've been out in the market now, this is second year, and I think they're just trying to push it, but it's coming out in their S U V's, everything, you're gonna see in the suburban, small ones. Not electric. Well, I think the big push is they're getting thirty some miles a gallon of these pickups.
Well, the thing with those new diesels is that you can't even tell they're diesel anymore.
So I, maybe that's an option.
They run so nice and clean.
Yeah, that's an option to look at.
Yeah.
Cause you can get to H, uh, heavy duty, uh, axles and it's the same as the.
Three quarter ton.
I walked past a brand new Duramax running the other day, I had a C five, you couldn't even tell it was diesel. I mean, it wasn't like an old power stroper, it was a. Yeah, so.
I, I, I don't.
An option for you guys.
True. Keep that in mind, we, we can't run the diamond fuel, so we'd still end up buying fuel in town, which is not a big deal, but.
Gotta run gas too, but.
So anyway, Jeremy did give me a bid for a Chevy pickup, one style I'm looking for. That was, uh, thirty eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy three dollars. And he also. Oh, Jeremy, but Brad Evak that's running a Ram dealership, had a Ram for forty six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Of the style we're looking for. And again, Jeremy said that, we don't wanna wait too long to get this ordered because they're gonna probably do the same thing with Chevys, just quit, quit taking orders for, for long.
And the state had a state bid price on the Ford, but they can't even order them.
Can't order them, no, but they didn't last, the bid didn't even last sixty days.
Yeah, it's, it's a low bid, but can't even get them.
Right.
Interesting. I'll make a motion, we go with the Chevy then, since that was the little bit.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Okay, we have a motion in the second, would you repeat that price one more time, thirty eight thousand, three hundred is that we said?
Thirty thousand, nine seventy three.
Nine seventy three. And we're just getting them off. Okay, just the one, any further discussion? If you're none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion is carried. Carry.
Um, that's the invoice for our, our new truck will be until, well, if it comes off the line on December tenth, like Friday or this week. And that date keeps moving, but anyway, it's looking like we're not gonna get it before the first of the year, so I asked them to send me an invoice for the truck and chassis and. That invoice was for a hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and eighty nine dollars. That doesn't include the, the sander and, and, uh. Paul, all the snow equipment stuff, which is from another dealer, and I asked him for an invoice too, but he hasn't said, it took me heads, so we'll probably end up paying for that at the next meeting. That's the one that we got the low before, yeah, exactly, yeah. So anyway, I guess I'd like a motion to pay that for the truck and chassis out of this year's budget for a hundred and two thousand, nine eighty nine.
I'm gonna approve for a second. Okay, we have a motion in the second to approve paying a hundred and two thousand, nine eighty nine for an invoice on our snow block, is that right?
Uh, it's just a truck and chassis.
It's just the, just the truck and chassis, okay. Uh, we'll call please.
Brown.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Lighton.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Yeah, the next thing, we also got the invoice for the striping that we did for J and J Striping did that, I'm carrying it. Uh, the project was our chip seal project up on three A and nine C, then we also had the wood wrapped, the road done and the quarry road done. And the total for that was twenty seven thousand, five hundred and eighty two dollars and forty four cents. Like a motion, pay that.
I would approve that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve paying twenty seven thousand, five eighty two for chip sealing on three A, nine C quarry wood rep, I get all of this? Okay. Uh, any further discussion? We'll call please.
I think there's an additional forty four cents on that.
Oh, and forty four cents.
Don't short them.
Yeah, don't short them.
Chris?
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Lighton.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
And it's not time of year to update our five year road plan yet, it looks like this, looking for the copy. Uh, the first page is our gravel projects, and again, what we do is just take the project that we completed this year, leave it to the bottom of this. So, and then everything just moves up a year, or moves up to the current year. So next year we'll be graveling Ramsey ten, the first three miles and then. Way out on the end by where the fish wildlife used to be, there's two miles out there that was inundated. So we'll be grapping, two and a half, so we'll be graveling them also. And also we're gonna do the quarry road from quarry going north. Uh, four E, which is south of Doian, and all that. And then, uh, Ramsey Benson line, same issue where it was underwater by Howard Blagan's old place, there's two and a half miles there that we're grabbing this year.
On that, any of these roads we using that base stabilizer on any of the frost boils or?
Let me think. It doesn't look big, I mean, four E, that's pretty solid as far as frost boils, so.
That, that one end going, uh, from quarry north to Ramsey two.
Yeah, no, that's. Oh, well, that's like actual frost boil, so it's not like a soft spot. I don't know if it would help there.
Okay.
Tugging on that hilltop?
Right.
Yeah, that always does, isn't it? I don't, there's a way you can fix it other than maybe meshing it or trying it or something.
Oh, yeah, 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 the bus is stuck.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, see, that, that one's been soft, you know, that part of the south.
No, it's, it's usually that hill right around that, right, that road right that goes east to west, right, or the quarries, that crown of that hill usually gets bad through there and that's great to have. Yeah, they'd always push laws, no different like on county three. The pavement there, the hill is always the one that wants to push up, I don't know why, it's just how it always is.
That's crazy, it's on a hill.
Yeah. Water comes out of hillsides.
Do that now, true.
Oh, it's been pretty good, it's been, it's been a while now.
Yeah, those lots of water, right up to summer.
Yeah.
Kind of normal. Water wise.
We still will be doing some soft spots if they show up on other roads, I mean, I just can't think of any of these ones.
True.
Of those, uh, two that have been inundated, they're kind of a experiment kind of, but I don't know if you've had a chance to get out on those inundated roads, but. First of all, the material, uh, washed off and all that's left is the fines and it's like driving on a beach, you know, that's, you just sink right in. And slowly over the summer, it did firm up, but now we just gotta get a good layer of gravel on the top of it. It was a matter of letting it dry out, if you let the sand on a beach dry out long enough, it'll get hard too, you know, that type of thing.
That's up there in ten, no?
There's one on ten on the very far end by the, then there's south of the church is very way down where we hardly used to live.
I was directed to go out there and check that one this fall one time, when I, you know, we wanted to look at it.
Yeah.
And I hadn't been altered since it was built, but, you know, yeah, they got a lot of farm out back.
Yeah, especially, yeah. On both of them actually, yeah.
It looked good, it looked really good. I never really could remember seeing it that dry, you know, myself.
Yeah.
It's been a long time.
I was amazed they firmed up as much as they did, cause I, if you were familiar with that washed sand, it's, that quick sand. And it did firm up really nice.
They're in moisture underneath it.
Exactly. It's that moisture.
It looks good. Got a lot, a lot of that now.
So any questions on our graveling for five year program? Okay, the next page is our paving project, our paving project, again, everything just moves down line, or down the bottom of the list. So next year we'll be paving that Ramsey three through that ham, hamland area.
Can I get everything set up through Hamlet?
Yeah, I think so. I still haven't talked to the John Ear dealer, but. I think you'll, I'm just, as soon as I do talk to them, I'll, you know, sure. So any questions on our projects? Okay, the next page is our chip seal program. Next year will be chip sealing four B, which is by Doug Frigie himself there, and also eight. Uh, through Lawton. And then West. So any questions there? Okay, the last pages are bridges and. Spent quite a bit of time on this one, I think that's the last. Well, of course, the first one listed is that big bridge that we're putting on Ramsey four. So that's why it's so it's seven hundred thousand dollars. The next three, that's probably our last three that um we would be capable of doing. However, but after that they start getting really big. So that's what I have figured for doing next year, those three and the only thing that may happen is the one we took out, the next must be the fifth line and the sixth line of the two that we tore out and didn't replace with anything. And I guess if we get comments from the public or whatever, we can put something back in there, but for now the plan is not to. I think the Colored One, they don't want anything in that one, but the one with Ted Schneider used to live that that's one I have to get some feedback from the public. It's not me a news now, I'm crossing, but as people buy land and change hands and land, things change. The first four we're gonna use culverts then? Uh, the very first one is that blue box culvert by Doug Frigie. And the next three are culverts.
Once we get those three out, any idea how many bridges we're well, we're in box culverts and two, so before, how many bridges are we down to?
Just under fifty. Right at fifty is an easy number, but I think it is just under fifty.
That that counts just bridges? That doesn't count things we have culverts in right now?
No, that would count.
We're down to fifty, but tho- all those fifty are basically ones that we have to keep in place because like you said, they're bigger and they might be a box culvert someday or something like that, but they're all.
There's fifty.
Yeah, it's crazy. I had to count them two or three times, but there is that many.
So they have to replace it probably.
I think so, the box culverts.
You're more familiar up there than I am.
Well, I wouldn't be surprised if there's fifty. I mean, because if I remember at the the U G B U U I'm pretty glad plans U G P T I, the thing they had, I think it said we had fifty four or fifty eight or something like that, but that's nothing compared to like when you get down into a trail and Walsh, they've got like five hundred bridges or something like that. It's insane. Yeah, I mean, we're actually pretty good, but then you go to the western part of the state, there's places there's not a bridge in the hole.
No.
They just don't have any.
So those last fifty in the water.
There's a few places that actually got boxes.
Fifty we'd have left in are ones that have been replaced within the last thirty years probably and we're the big concrete uh like Griffler with uh what is it? All the so. Anyway, they're the the big concrete decked ones with the concrete.
Like like like.
Big solid structures.
Like like Bellegarde is.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of. There are a lot like that.
Bellegarde is a good bridge. That'll be there for thirty forty years when they touch them. Yeah.
We may have three or four. We may have three or four that are still outdated by the lake, but you can't even get to them now. So as the lake goes down, we may have three or four there that haven't been used in the last twenty years.
There's no more spots like the one we did by which there were we can replace culverts with a bridge.
No, that's that's exactly right. They're all big ones like that.
Yeah, the old, there's the one west of Tommy Hodges is that's still a wooden style bridge that's older, but that's got a pretty good span where I don't, I think that's gonna probably have to be a bridge at some point too. Maybe box culverts, but you're not gonna get away with small culverts because there's just too much water there, I think.
On those box culverts, can they like stack them side by side by side?
Yeah. Tommy Hodges, does he live by State Avenue one?
He he no, he lives by north of me off of three to the west there. So it'd be the it'd be the first bridge from the one that we replaced north of which used there.
That is a big wooden bridge.
Yeah, that's a pretty, that's an older bridge, but I think that's probably one of the older ones in the county, but it's still a solid bridge, but at some point that's gonna need to be replaced. I think so, I think it's all right.
Probably ten years ago we fixed the, there's two piers under there, you know, like wooden post piers and we fixed some of those a couple of years ago because the ice has fucked them up. So yeah, there it's been worked on since I've been here too.
Yeah, I mean, at some point, like I said, it might be something where you'd want to put boxes in or something, but I think it's got a pretty good flow there because it's the first one upstream before that big bridge we put in. So so it's got pretty good flow rate there.
A lot of water comes through there, especially these pieces of culvert stuff over on three.
Yeah.
With that plastic liner, I think that tree might be going through there first year.
It does.
It's it's noticeable from just driving over top of the equipment, you can see that.
The water was water breaks fast with those line out of there. Doesn't it?
Yeah, the first time I heard that, when you put a smaller culvert in, but if it's a plastic one, it moves more water out of it. But it certainly does.
Yeah.
You know, getting rid of those ribs.
Yeah, steal steal the ribs. Way more friction versus smooth surface play.
It's crazy.
Kevin, did you just want us to look at this project or did you want to improve?
It was on our website.
Okay, so we did a motion to approve the.
I'll let you rope that again.
The motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion is carried.
Hey, all the last thing I have, I'm sure most of you already know this, that House Bill fifteen oh five, our share of that was just under a million dollars. They give us some guidelines as what we can use it for, but they're still ironing out the details. That's just for information more than anything.
This is state records.
Yep, that's state our money to.
The Prairie Dog replacement dollars.
We didn't get as much as some counties, but again, I think a lot of they use the U G P T I studies. So again, it's related to bridges and how many county roads you have. And again, Walsh, who has all the bridges, has a county road every three miles. So, you know, they have tons of county roads.
And it's got a lot of money.
Yeah, it is. It's like three million dollars they get or something.
They need a lot. They got they got a backlog of.
That's all I have.
Take a little time to thank Kevin and his crew for getting all the ready roads out in the southeast corner of town last week. I believe well much helped it was. It really smoked it up.
You know, that wet snow during car harvest and yeah, they got.
It really, really helped a lot. Really, really. Really breached. People are they're waving at me now. With all their fingers. Yeah, with all their fingers. With all their fingers. You said that one. Yeah, I haven't seen that. Yeah, but no, and I did. No, thank you very much. Thank you. Very appreciated.
I'll pass it on.
Thank you. That was a tough fall on our roads just because we got wet the wrong time and we ours are not horrible. They're pretty decent, but they were rutted up, you know, with people going on and everything.
Uh, good. The crops gonna get through, so.
Yeah, I got fit to combine. You got to go a little time ago. Sorry about the road. Got chewed up, so. They're a lot better, a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, Kevin.
Move on to new business. Uh, approval of a raffle permit. Who do approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion is carried. Leases on Devils Lake Basin Heart Court School and Sheriff's House.
Should we do them all in one shot? I'll make a motion to approve all of them.
And we have a motion in a second to approve all of the leases. Uh, I believe they're unchanged. Is that correct?
Yeah, I did add um the Lake Region State volleyball. It's just a young group association that wanted to use use the facility. So I figured we'd just do a users agreement explaining, you know, what they're responsible for and they were they were fine with that, so.
More groups we can just really no liability issue and all that. That makes sense.
Yeah. Sounds good. And we have a motion in a second. So all those in favor assign those leases, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion is carried. Approval of the joint powers agreement for uh H R services with Lake Region District Health. Oh.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign. Motion is carried. Approval of joint powers agreement for veteran service officer for uh with Benson and Nelson County. Uh, did we make any adjustments to uh the percentages on that or are we still working off the original ones?
Yes, we were. Sixty, one and two, eighteen.
Okay, what what year did we first set that up? Was that twenty nineteen, eighteen?
Oh, gosh, that's a good question. Were you on the commission?
I was because it was.
Must have been the picture you were on. Must have been like eighteen.
It was, it wasn't that sixteen.
Seventy sixteen.
What do you say though on losing on losing years here?
Because it's it seems to me like not not that it's a big deal, but we should probably talk to them and see if they want to to do another count and change those percentages because that's what we set it up. The original was it would track the total number of uh veterans of each county.
I think it'd be beneficial to do it the same way this year and then have uh our veteran service officer look into it and then maybe we can make adjustments for next year. My my assumption would be, it's just my assumption, that we're probably gonna gain more. It's gonna cost us a little more, but that's fine as long as it's fair. We're doing it. We were agreed to do it.
We better put it in August or something. Look at it then so we can have a ready.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
Yeah, oh, no, I didn't. I didn't necessarily mean to to change it now. I was thinking about it.
We talk about it every year because it comes up. It's like, well, something we should have done it three months ago as well. Today have have made note to Bryce that he should take a look at. We should adjust it for next year.
I don't think anyone changed the system. I don't know.
No, I think the system works really well, but I think it's only fair that we we basically set it up under the share of how many veterans. So if we did end up with more, we should end up paying a little more, which is fair to them.
Yeah, and I think it's it's about time that next year we think we'd be a good time to figure that out.
Both of you.
Well, I would say we move the crew with the exception that Adam looked at.
Okay, for a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, motion in a second. Uh, on veteran service joint powers agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion is carried. Twenty twenty two meeting dates. Do we have any interesting dates?
No.
Everything's on a Tuesday. No holidays, no moves, no nothing ever.
Doesn't affect election.
What a deal.
I know, I know.
Well, good port. Twenty twenty two is gonna be a great year, right? Who's deeper? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion is carried. Board appointments. I think everybody got their purple uh folder here, board appointments. And the boards that are up. Adam, are you interested in staying on social service zone board?
Yeah, I think I've already signed the sheet over here, so.
Well, I guess we have.
We just have to re- we have to reappoint the reappoint the people on the list, right? Who's up? What do we have again? I can't.
Okay, so we've got Adam on Mountain Lake Social Service Zone Board, Ed on Senior Commission on Aging, uh myself on North Central Planning Council and Christie Trotter on Reorganization and Annexation Board.
I'll make a motion to reappoint those four individuals to their current position or the positions presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second that we re-nominate all of the individuals back to their previous boards. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion is carried. Approval of computer purchase for I T and G I S. We've got a quote right here. I think is it this number here, Henry?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So there was there were two numbers there. Which one is it?
Oh, here I see this. We get a discount. So I think the the number is two thousand eight hundred and fifty four dollars and seventy two cents.
So this is just new computer, higher power for the G I S front of the?
Um, yeah, he has the oldest computer.
Oh, okay. He probably does the most or some of the most, but they're too high powered.
That's a Dell laptop.
Oh, make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve uh paying for this. We have a second. Okay, uh, if we need a little call out soon, ring the bell.
Um, well, we're just ordering.
We're just ordering.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
He actually like ordered it yesterday, so. Get it before the end of the year.
Okay. All right then.
We're we're kind of struggling. We're kind of struggling to get computers.
I think everybody is.
Okay, did we get a motion in a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All those in favor, uh signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion is carried. Visitors and delegations. No, you sure?
Just here to watch.
You can talk about anything you want.
The roads have been great from the end to here.
Well, that's that's great to hear. There you go, Kevin.
We don't hear that very often.
Okay, uh portfolios. And we'll start with Commissioner Ipan.
Well, um, let's see, I'll start uh social services. I I actually missed, I believe, last month. We'll be having another one coming up here. I got we moved our social services board meetings to nine A M on Wednesdays now, uh because it worked better for the uh the whole committee, but I got double booked last month with the Forward Devils Lake meeting. I think we had to move that, so I got missed. Uh, speaking of Forward Devils Lake, um, we had spent our last meeting talking a lot about, and this was right before the legislative session was occurring, if I remember correctly, it was that, but regardless, we spent a lot of time talking about um, long-term planning essentially from this the prospect of, you know, now that the state has put that seed money into the natural gas pipeline, it's gonna run down to making sure we get in on that to, you know, make sure that we can feed a new industrial park with those and see where the routing is gonna be. There isn't really a plan specifically in place yet. That hundred and fifty million, it sounds like a lot of money, but that's just like seed money for the actual natural gas pipeline. They're talking it's gonna cost upwards of a billion, I think, running across the whole state. So there's going, at least that's why it was my understanding and the discussion and visit about it. So it's gonna be kind of like a public-private partnership. It sounds like it's kind of like seed money to get it going. But we need to stay on top to make sure that when they run that thing down to where's it gonna be, are we gonna so we can have access for our industrial park. Um, it was a long, you know, it was kind of all developed in a plan and heard the discussion talking about, you know, Grand Forks is supposed to be getting this corn slurry plant. I don't know exactly how what they're gonna do, but it's a big project and they need natural gas and water, all of those things. Well, how do we get the natural gas and all those things so we can try to maybe find something like that that'll fit our community, but that's more of the scope that we can, you know, because uh we've had this long and I we've talked about it there too, this long-term discussion that the state pushes out these projects to all these different communities and then says, you know, put your time and effort into them and bid on them when there's just no, there's no chance of us getting because they needed so many corn acres within so many miles. They need all of these things and like on that project in Grand Forks, we hit on eight out of the ten numbers, but we didn't have enough corn acres within a certain amount of miles. And I think the natural gas was a success.
Water.
Water was probably a big part of it too. You know, you have to have a treatment plant that can handle, I can't remember it's I mean, they're talking about putting another a hundred million into their treatment plant just so they can handle this plant. It's a big, big, big deal. So and but we've talked about, you know, there's certain things and and Brad's good at what he does. So he looks at it and he goes, guys, you know, our 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 group as a whole, this is something I think we should look at. This is something that we're probably gonna be wasting our time. You know, so there's certain projects that plus, and let's just be honest about it, like something like that, they're talking five hundred long-term jobs or something. I don't think we can find fifty people on long-term jobs around here. If they're good enough jobs, we can pull them into the community. But housing, everything that wraps around with that is something that's a continual discussion at Forward Devils Lake because it's if you don't have housing, you can't get workers, if you can't get workers, you can't bring in the projects, if you don't have the infrastructure to bring in projects, can't win. So it's a consistent discussion that we just keep going around and around.
It's gonna be very beneficial.
Oh, it's gonna be huge. Yeah, well, in all honesty, I think there was kind of not surprised necessarily that Grand Forks was the place that kind of won the spotting, but most of those projects that we've seen, the value-added egg stuff has gone down the ninety-four corridor into Castleton or into that Stutzman, Jamestown, Spiritwood area. So to see one up in Grand Forks was kind of surprising, but I think they put forward a really strong bid on it and they wanted it pretty bad. So but they're gonna, you know, even Northern Valley, pulling in the amount of corn necessary is gonna be, they'll be able to do it because of the infrastructure they have, just run it out, get it there, but it's gonna be a little bit more travel getting it there versus Sydney and Stutzman or Castle. So but it's gonna be a good project for Grand Forks if they can get it actually all put together, but huge investment uh to get the everything in place. But so we had a lot of discussion about that locally. Few projects Brad was looking at. Um, nothing in particular yet, but things that we're just been discussing.
You you wanna talk about that uh survey that
Oh, yes.
is doing along with uh North Central.
Yes, yes.
Um, that that I believe is is meant to go out to everybody, right?
That was my understanding, yes.
Yeah, so.
It's a it's a community survey. Uh, they're looking for input from everybody. Uh, I can't remember what the deadline on it is.
I think was it the seventeenth of December?
Yeah, it's coming up here shortly, I believe, but essentially. Yeah, it's coming up here shortly, I believe, but essentially as you go online and they'll ask you some questions, they're looking for input on the community, basically for direction moving forward on. What do we think we should be looking for and what do you think would make the community better, I think, is, I haven't taken it yet myself, but I need to sit down to get it done as well, so.
But I think what Brad indicated was, you, you know, every time you talk to somebody, they said, oh, we should get this, or we should have that, and kinda thing. So we thought, well, let's put something together where we get an idea of what everybody needs or wants within our community. And then bring that survey results back to local officials, as how many city commissioners, uh, Forward Devils Lakes, and North Central Planning. And but I think that survey, I think it was sent to us commissioners, but I think it should go employee-wide, I think it should be shared somehow, social media.
Well, they put it out across, yeah, they put it out across Forward Devils Lake and I think the chambers, Facebook page, wherever, it's come across a few different ways. So, yeah, everybody should take it, because I think it's, I think, you know, I guess it's my opinion, and I don't know if it's everybody's opinion, but, you know, as a community, you know, we're not a, we're not a large, large community. So we kinda have to pick and choose in terms of, you know, long-term project costs and what we need as a community, cause we can't have, we can't be Fargo and say, oh, we're just gonna do six things. We just don't have the dollars to do it, so we kinda have to pick and choose, what do we think are the upgrades the community needs and using public tax dollars and things like that, so. Guiding off of a, off of a document like that is probably really beneficial, cause I know there's gonna be some asks going forward for the community.
Sure.
Where, where are we gonna wanna put our dollars, so beneficial look at that, um, trying to think of anything else, uh, we had, uh. Uh, extension come in, uh, yeah, trying to think, state's attorney, uh, everything's kinda just rolling along there. Um, I don't think of anything else, I think that's it.
And did you wanna talk about boys additional staff and the stat, the building limitations?
We're still working on it. I've talked with, I've talked with Rhonda about if short-term down here.
Yeah.
Uh, we think we can maybe make that work, at least with a short-term, long-term plan, I don't have one yet, I'm still working on it. I actually need to talk to our clerk of court about it, so I was gonna visit with her after the meeting about it, so I think I've got the time to sit down and visit about it.
Well, you know, we, we've talked about it, that, you know, the underutilized space within the, the building is very limited. Uh, we have the commission room here, we, you know, talked about having, you know, their staff temporarily in here. Catty has indicated she may have a desk or two within her area, um. And, you know, the other underutilized area within the building that may provide some security for a state's attorney type of. Confidentiality, um, security would be the historical room, um, you know, it's not overly booked with meetings, you put one of the keypad locks on it. Um, and you know, and if there is a, a meeting scheduled, you know, we could either offer up the commission room, uh, for those small meetings. Um, or we could partition off a big meeting room, or utilize the armory in the memorial building. Yeah, you know, and if we're doing long-term remodeling plans, um, within the facility. And, you know, to put somebody permanently in a, a situation only to have to.
Oh, yeah.
Move, um, you know, be beneficial, and so, and I think there may be some, some growing pains moving forward.
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't disagree, I think that's, in all honesty, that's kinda why I've been trying to determine what our best course of action is. Because I don't think it's beneficial for us to put a bunch of money into the facility in terms of flipping an office or something until we know long-term what we wanna do.
Right.
You know, I mean, so we can short-term, and, and, and Bo has even made mention, if we have to, we can maybe, we can have, uh, some of his staff, he's already rotating staff anyway. We could have some work from home, some in, in the building, just to kinda roll it back and forth. Until, he'd like to have all the staff in one place, in one office, obviously, that would make it, you know, flow easier, but if we have to for a little while, we can make that work too, so. He's pretty flexible on it, we'll, we'll figure out a, a plan in terms of where, you know, we might have, like you said, we have some extra desks, we might have to take them in a couple places.
Reading, write out paper, Ford County moved their extension office. Down towards the state playground, the building down there, with the rodeo department.
Well, in long-term planning, I mean, I, I.
I'm not.
No, I know that's not what you're saying, but, but I know there are a couple of, a couple of staff, you know, of our entities that are. Uh, political subdivisions essentially that wouldn't mind having more space, like we've talked district health, maybe would be some, like, somebody that if we visited with them, if we wanted to. Not expand the courthouse, but just utilize our existing space a little bit more, maybe you could use some of those ARPA dollars to. Find another facility for district health and, and help them out with the renovation or whatever, and put them in a facility, just so we could gain, cause they're kind of on top of each other already. So we could gain some area back there, so there's some long-term options to look at, but just, I, I've found, and I'm not blaming anybody, because I understand that change is difficult. That everybody's like, we kinda like where we're at, we don't wanna move, and I don't, I understand that completely, you know, so. At, at some point in time, we're just gonna have to come up with what we think is the best plan. And, and if we have to make some people angry, we're gonna have to make some people angry, I guess, as best we can, we'll try to accommodate everybody as best we can. But we're gonna have to come up with a plan and just say, this is what we have to do and go forward, you know?
Certainly like to have a crystal ball knowing how the state's gonna handle the combination of the public health and social services.
Exactly.
That'd be a huge hack to move one of them out here and then all of a sudden they're.
Well, they're, they're becoming one entity at a state level, so.
Well, exactly, yeah, and, and they all work, and they work together very often, which is why it's nice having them on the side of the floor, cause they kinda go back and forth together, but at the same, yeah. It's, if we don't have a crystal ball to know where we're gonna be at a year or two years from now, which is difficult.
But both the entities are over top of one another, but if they moved out, it would be echoes in our hall, eh, you know, you could, hello, hello, hello.
Well, and that's, that's kinda the problem, is, is, you know, if, if you wanna move somebody else someplace, it's gotta be a, a department that can sit on their own.
Yeah.
But isn't so big that all of a sudden we're opening up so much space, we've got a bunch of empty office space here either, which we could probably find a way to fill it.
It'd be good to hold, that's what Ford County thought, the extension service, you know, they're only gonna do service.
Right.
Like region health there, they could help facilitate that.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't.
Like if the fair is gonna be doing it, that's just an option, I'm just looking at an option.
How?
To grow, that could be maybe one of the things to be able to do.
I should, I should know this, all right, how, how many people do we have in our extension office?
Four, four, three, three, and then, um, Trish, Trish, excuse me, yeah, works part-time.
Yeah.
So basically, on, on half of these, there's four of them, and they've got a decent-sized office, but it's not massive, but I mean, they've got a bunch of stuff in that office.
Got a lot, a lot of stuff.
And in all honesty, I don't think extension would wanna move out simply because they've got ground up here and everything else, and.
Yes.
I mean, it, it doesn't make sense for us to move extension, I think if we were gonna move somebody out, the most common sense would be district health, just because. You move social services and you're, that's half the only.
The, the, the issue is, is that you're either, cause I've, you know, I've had long conversations with, uh, Mr. McCann on this. You're either building something from the ground up to suit their needs, or you're spending that much money anyway, because there is nothing that suits their needs. That's open or available.
No, I realize that, I mean, there's, it's, it's, we're in kind of a, we're bumping up against a no-win situation, basically. I mean, we can, I think we can find some other options, but it's gonna be, we're just gonna pack ourselves in more than we're already packed in, but I mean. Like you said, it's, it's a question of, we need to have that long-term discussion, and if we could just come up with a short-term solution. Uh, to make it work for the next little while until we can have that discussion, figure out what we're gonna do with the ARPA dollars and those kinda things, then we're gonna have to just make it work. And like I said, I'm both flexible, we'll figure it out.
I'd like to know why Ford County's moving, they need space.
They probably, I would guess they probably have more space, I don't know if extension needs more space or somebody else does, but they probably just need more space.
But it's supposed to be done by the fairgrounds. We talked about, they're gonna leave out the fairgrounds.
Well, that's one of the biggest things we talk about, who's gonna facilitate it all the time, you know, and that would, might be a prime option. You know, like I said, I'm not telling anybody to move, but if we look at big picture, on the colony, it might be one of those options that.
They're not that option.
And right, and the nice part about doing something like that is, it wouldn't actually be that expensive to build onto that building, right, I mean.
Exactly.
But we're going way, way down the rabbit hole here, Adam, do you have anything else?
I don't, that's all I have for now.
Okay, then I will, uh, move it on to Christian Volker.
Um, I missed the lake access meeting last time, but I was, uh, here for this, the earliest one. Their biggest concern right now, Sutie's concern, is lake access, uh, as far as, uh, not this winter, but next spring, if we don't get any water. They have, they're talking to M Fish about extending all the docks, or only one dock that will not have to be extended. So they were really concerned on that, so they had put it in, hopefully they could get money from the funds for that. But if not, it's gonna be a nip and tuck, and I think we're gonna have a community screaming that they can't get boats in the water. Every one of them has to be extended, extended except for the S's. Um, and they put out the bids for winter accents, that will be done next meeting. We're, um, accepting the bids there, and then Dr. Lisa's been setting out the money market portfolio, I think we've been getting it too, it all looks good. She's happy with it, as long as we're happy with it, quarter's office, I don't have anything, um. And then the third word we need to make for you in the meeting, other than that, and then we've been talking about building, we put a building committee together. And then we're going down that road, so, and Connie had sent something out, um, Rumbi actually got a huge grant, put up a new building for them. So I think we're pursuing that to see how much grant money we could get, and maybe see how much the community would like to help out with it. And then, uh, bring it to us to see how much we could help out, hopefully we can get our ducks in our own, and that's why I bring up that this is, this extension thing would be a good thing if that was to come. Maybe it's something known in the near future, to help all of us, I think it would help both sides a lot. I mean, as, as strong as our community is with four H, I don't think we should move on with the four H stuff especially.
I think one thing to keep.
Facility we could use a lot, you know?
One thing to keep in mind is involve your local legislators, um, as they're planning for next session. You, you know, um, I, if we would've been on top of that special session, I think there may have been some. Um, dollars available through that state ARPA funding that were made available for brick and mortar type of facilities. And one of the key things that they're looking for is community buy-in, eh, you know, a community match. And so if we're willing to, to match dollar for dollar or something like that, and this is what it, what it's for, there may be, you know. But I'd certainly talk to Senator LP and Representative Johnson and, and, uh.
Yeah, cause I think the only thing that was funded in the community off that money was, uh, some money for the heritage center, if I remember right.
Did, did Dave get that, I, I know he had put in Senator.
I think so.
At Ashford.
Match money? No, this was just, this was just direct answer, we're gonna.
I think our ARPA fund, I think we just didn't realize that we could actually get money for that, otherwise we'd private it on.
Well, they, they opened and closed the requests like that.
Yeah, exactly.
O- opening, closing requests like that, and when we started hearing some of the, the testimony coming in for requests, and you just kinda. You know, your mouth panting at the floor because they were, uh, communities asking for the exact same things that, that we would love to have within our own community. Um, I don't know if all of them got funded, um, and, uh, but certainly having those requests in there and, and having a voice at the table and having them.
And that's what I basically told the building committee, that we have to have a footprint, so that when something like that comes, oh, hey, this is what we like, move forward or not. You know, because right now, they don't have that plan, we gotta have that plan.
Gotta have the plan, you gotta have that match money sitting there.
Yeah.
That match money is huge, huge. I'm not saying dollar for dollar, but I mean, you better have something there.
Exactly, there's gotta be, that shows the interest of the community.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you don't have to have people write you checks right away, but you have to have commitments.
Exactly.
And if you have a good grant in place, plus commitments, and maybe, I mean, it's, I don't know what the building's gonna cost, but I mean, maybe it's something we could pull out locally too, with. Between a grant and, and enough, enough commitment from the community, you know, that maybe the county would have enough where we're all, you know, it'd make it happen.
You know, like that's, you know, more of her going up to the fair stuff, I think that was actually an eye-opener. Cause I think she seemed a lot like, how are they doing this, and that's what I said, we need to find out, how did they do it? Granted, we're not gonna be big like that overnight, but where did they start?
Yeah.
We gotta have a starting point, you know, you're not gonna grow millions and millions of dollars overnight, but you gotta have a starting point and then you grow from there.
I, I think the key that the, the fair foundation did was create that five oh one T three, and so people can contribute to that being tax-exempt, and so. I think we may, as that becomes more public, publicly known, and I think people will be more willing to start contributing and, and donating to that.
Well, like we did last year, showing that, we put up, just, I'm using examples, we put the rodeo on, to show people that, hey, this is for the community. This is what we need, put the four H tents up out there, if the community come out there pretty soon, they see, hey, it's being used, other than not being used, they're more of a. You know?
Five hundred eighty-three, four H, that is the state fair, I mean, that's gotta rank right up, it's very big town, so, you know? More tomorrow, but.
Our fair facilities are used a lot, and it's cause the girls are doing a good job.
Absolutely.
I can see if that's all I have as far as.
Yeah. Well, there's a lot of things going on, um, Catty's been busier than busy, um, um. Did have an, an issue arise in your last late social service meeting, um, with internet access in the basement.
Oh, okay, I guess it wasn't.
And, uh, so we're trying to work with Steve and Nathan and everybody that's booking rooms, that. Steve is aware of what the meeting needs and has adequate bandwidth for operating a Teams meeting or a Zoom meeting or. Whatever type of meeting is, is being involved down there, and, and part of it is, was just an overall lack of communication, I think. Um, and we need to communicate better and having better. Audiovisual capabilities within our meeting rooms, I think, is key, a- as we move forward. Uh, you know, I think this past two years has really shown us a lot of, of what can be done remotely. And people are, are utilizing that more and more, but we need to stay on top of that technology within our own facilities. And so, I, I think Nathan and Steve, we're gonna try to work with, you know, when, when Nathan's taking a room reservation. And either emailing the, whoever is booking that meeting, and making sure that if they need. Some sort of high bandwidth that Steve is made aware of that, so arrangements can be made. You know, cause Steve's not, that's not his responsibility, and we shouldn't certainly put it on Roger, uh, to, when he's setting up for a meeting, that he's gonna know. About that either, so, but that was a, a big issue that, that created some, some headaches and. And, uh, for, always frustrating when you're trying to run a meeting, coordinate a meeting, and things don't work properly. Um, adds to that level of, of stress that can be avoided, um. Chamber, they, uh, doing their cookie crawl, um, this Sunday, at their offices, so you can drive through and get a hot cup of cocoa and a cookie. And a map of the, all the people that have registered for the, um, holiday light showcase, they're doing that contest again. And the, uh, the airport is moving along with our, uh. Terminal expansion, uh, with the ARPA dollars that the airport received, and I know it's probably no secret. I think everybody's been made aware that we, um, are looking for a new airport manager, um, we're not. Not in any real big hurry, uh, to host that, there's a lot of irons in the. There's a lot of irons in the fire and we have an interim manager out there that stepped up and really doing a, a wonderful job, Scott Cruz. Is, uh, been appointed that and Dennis Olson, our board chairman, has been taking the bull by the horns and both of them. Really need to be commended for their efforts on, on moving that project and that airport, um, forward. So, but I don't, we have a meeting on Monday for the airport authority and we'll discuss the, the manager's position and when we. Wanna move forward with a, uh, job description and get that posted, but. I talked to Dennis yesterday, it didn't sound like we're gonna be in any real big hurry to have a lot of irons in the fire over there moving forward with the. New terminal or the terminal expansion up there with the airport, my, uh, airport received. And I guess we got an update on the jail. Um, water is moving forward, uh, Legislative Committee on Water Drainage. Um, is tomorrow in Bismarck, so if anybody has any input on draining water or how to improve. Drainage laws or how to be, um, you know, issues that we have experienced in our own counties. I sit on that committee representing the Association of Counties. Um, so need to, to have input from counties instead of. Just representing water resource districts, which I'm probably more familiar with, but, um. One of the, the issues is taking two different legislative, two different century codes and trying to combine them. And making sure that all the projects that were done previously are somehow grandfathered in. And administered through those new rules and regulations that were set forth to study and move forward with. But Kevin, do you have any issues with how County Water Board works with you at your office at all?
No.
I know your counterpart from Welsh County had some, some serious issues and again, a lot of that comes back to communication. Problems and I know our water board has been aware of some shortfalls in communicating with. The right partners, um, making sure that any of, uh. Any of they're gonna be doing a, a drain and it's gonna require massive amount of culprits that somebody's. It's involved, involved at that time before it comes up with, uh, oh, by the way, we need these and if that's on your dime. So, but, uh, the water conference, uh, basically starts today, runs through Friday afternoon, so. Um, be a full day of, or a full week of water meetings, uh, Water Stewardship Award that the joint board will be giving out. Is on Thursday evening at the awards banquet, um. We have a individual from Cavalier County that was nominated and chosen as our Water Stewardship Award. Um, Larry Delner served twenty-nine years with the Cavalier County Water Board. And, uh, most of those as well with the Devilsite Joint Board as their representative from the Joint Board. He was nominated from Cavalier County Water Board as well as our county commission, so. Larry was an easy choice to receive that award, we're giving that out Thursday evening at the award banquet.
Randy? Anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay. Commissioner Holt?
Well, we talked about the jail, your services getting all good? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it, Randy.
Uh, really quick, I just wanna say, uh, thank you to Commissioner Holt for serving as chairman. That's a meeting ran really well over the last year and really appreciated all that you did for the, the commission for the community while you were chairman, so thank you for that. Um, really quick, uh, Dakota Prairie had an audit and it came back completely clean, which is actually, I think, the first time that they've ever gotten. Completely clean audits, that was good. Um, still looking for a replacement for Mr. McKay. Uh, as of about a week ago, when I talked to him last, he said that, uh, they'd only gotten one applicant. Thus far for, uh, even head of district health, so hopefully we can find a few more for that. Um. I think that might be all the time, uh, to a certain degree, you gotta have. Uh, Masters of Public Health.
Masters? Bachelors more to it?
I think preferred is masters.
Preferred, right.
And minimum is bachelor's in related field to public health.
They're not advertised, they're advertised that way then.
I believe so, I saw the advertisement.
Yeah. But it's, it's kind of.
It's a pretty specific.
Set of credentials.
Set of credentials that are necessary to at least be even considered, so I think it's gonna be interesting, like you said, one applicant helping you.
Wow. One, one, at least as of a week ago.
What was the closing date on it?
Yeah, not until the beginning of next year, but the thing is, is it's, it's one of those things where, uh, Al has said he's willing to stay.
Until you.
To, to make the transition, but hopefully it doesn't end up being like a year-long process.
Yeah.
So, we'll see what we see, I suppose. Uh, are there any other announcements that anybody wants to make?
Uh, the employee appreciation breakfast.
Oh, yes, that was what I was trying to remember you mentioned.
Yeah, so I, I think Brian's doing, uh, trying to get people our SDP so we know approximately how many people will be serving that day.
They don't make, we don't make eggs for a hundred people and, and show them.
Yeah.
They don't be left over for long, huh?
Freezing down. Yeah, so that's next Friday already, um.
Yeah, Friday.
I think Adam and I have talked about, well, we haven't actually.
We need to talk.
Total discussion, we can do that, but, uh, we, we will be there cooking the other. Uh, if anybody has any food that they'd like to, to bring, a little sausage, okay?
Probably gonna be.
Perfect, so seven, seven o'clock, I'm gonna probably get here at six fifteen, six twenty. So, I think that'll be good.
Send me that reminder.
Uh, yes, and, and there's the, uh, first meeting of the ARPA here is tomorrow at what time? I think I have it in my calendar already, but I gotta check while. Yeah, it's in there, so, uh, we, we're gonna discuss in broad terms, uh, what the goals are of, of the committee. Uh, and, and how we intend to measure and consider and weigh the, uh, proposals that, that we get as we go forward, so.
Just wondering, the Adra Ward County, they got thirteen million and they're hiring a manager. Figure out how to standard and also to look for other grant money. I thought that was a very big plan.
Good idea.
Very, gotta be more grant money out there.
Well, yeah, if we could use it on a dollar-for-dollar match type of thing, right?
I've always been of the opinion that you could, you could hire a, like a county grant writer and have them be open to other organizations in the community. Because generally speaking, those grants include about ten percent for administrative costs, so if you had a.
Right.
If you had a grant writer that was writing a ton of grants and was good at it, you wouldn't, you wouldn't really end up needing to pay them anything.
They would do.
So they would, they could rather.
Pay for their position and it would pay if we did money roll into the community.
Yeah. Right, but, but I've always thought that you could, you could have that, make it open to the, the community and it wouldn't cost the county a dime.
Well, think of how many.
That's what WordCom's good.
Think of how many nonprofits we have in the community that would benefit from somebody that could write a grant for them because they're just part-time committees and volunteers and they just don't have the expertise to write.
It's huge, it's huge.
I mean, we could, we could, I mean, like you said, you could easily pay for it, just a community grant, one dollar, seven back, plus with the administrative fees, I think you could put money back in there.
That would be good, it's a lot of fun to age my, uh, people.
I think it's reasonable when you've got that kind of dollars though to.
Hire a manager.
Hire someone to manage it, needs to make sure there isn't a bunch, you know, that things are being done right, there isn't any waste.
That would be the article also that we got done.
Yeah, that's, it's a big dollar breaker.
Well, that's good. Anything else for the good of the order?
Becky, do you have anything from, uh, courts, uh, is there a grant or court, uh?
I was going to submit a grant this, um, year and we had started in November and finalized it in December, um, I talked to Roger about it and, um. We have to wait till next year, we have a big project we were gonna talk about with security with the, you know, having everybody go through the scanner at the door and that's gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars probably. Um, but we needed, we need to get that, those numbers together. But, um, the, the security committee is really encouraging us to apply for that grant. And the other option I was going to do for a smaller grant was to, um, make some improvements in our jury room so that we had, um, better accommodations for the jurors who were there. And with everything going on, Roger wasn't convinced we were gonna keep the jury room, so that's, you know, been a bit of a burp. So it was only a twelve thousand dollar project and he decided we shouldn't just go through with it until you guys make your decision.
Would, uh, the accessibility of the restrooms up on third floor qualify for that?
The grant does not allow for ADA accommodations, so, um, you would have to use specific wording to replace existing facilities.
Okay.
Like update them or something, the grant does not have ADA. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we can tell them, we just need some new tile.
Yeah, we have, pretty much, you know, I wanted to have the bathroom be part of the whole renovation to begin with, but we just narrowed it down to just, um, like. Something for like the food and water and stuff, so we get rid of our ugly cabinets and just have a comforter space. And I think that my Menards quote paid like just under twelve thousand dollars, that's when I did it. Um, and we, Tom and I were gonna go pick the stuff up, bring it here and even help them install it if you wanted help on a weekend, we'd sell it, but. Um, that had to be put on hold for now too, just to, you know, but that was that part, we actually had. A lot of talk about redoing the bathrooms, so you can't even probably walk in there much less, you're not gonna get a wheelchair in those bathrooms. Boom, 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 all the corners are raised, but, um, and that, that takes specific wording.
Kevin, do you wanna talk about that Highway Two meeting on, uh, go on Highway Two from the hefty rest area into town? Um, they are having a public information meeting on that on December fourteenth, was it?
Tuesday.
Can't see the number.
Yes.
Yes, the fourteenth of the.
A week.
The one.
Yeah, um, but I've been out to their preliminary meetings and, uh, one thing I think we should be opposed to is their proposal of J turns. Um, coming out of the, some of the areas, so you would, you couldn't go all the way across and turn to go east. Or come from the south and, and turn to go west, you would have to go down and then make a turn to go back.
So.
And right.
You have to go east to go west, basically trying to force right turns.
And, that may work in sunny climates, it never gets any snow, but I think we all know that it, it snows up here and it snows significantly. And the medians are always the last priority of the highway department, I think. Don't you agree, Kevin? But I, I mean, it's, you, you gotta get that road open first and then you'll come back and you'll do the medians. Um, you know, granted, that area needs to be looked at for safety concerns, but I think those J turns are a, a bad idea. Um, especially if, you know, if North Dakota gets into those longer road trains that's, that being studied or proposed. That would be an, almost an impossible corner to make, to come back around there.
Just floating regular semi around those turns is.
Right. Production.
I don't think they're looking for more approaches out there.
Yeah.
I don't think they're putting more approaches in out there.
I, I don't either.
Huh?
They're, they're, and there's too many access points is what they're trying to do is.
Instead of making J turns, they should just, they should cut down on, and put frontage roads on and then just limit your access points on the highway.
Frontage roads are down changing possibilities.
Yeah.
Not ours.
I know, and that's where we run into issues, cause I mean, they should just have limited access points in the frontage roads, cause that would make it far safer because the traffic is on them.
But, but we're so vulgar, make their voices heard, absolutely, don't get worried.
Yeah.
Well, it's not, it's not gonna be our dollars.
No, it's not our dollars thing to it.
But we should object to it.
We should be there at least, yeah, get our voices.
I don't know, what their idea is that rest area then for getting traffic onto the highway, they're gonna have to go east down to the cross over there.
No, I, 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 I think that was gonna be the same, I know they're gonna redo the, the parking lot in the hefty rest area, but I don't know if any. Any intersection changes could be proposed there.
It's.
It's, it's, it's more coming off of that, like that binding area and maybe a couple others that they would. They have no direct crossings, so you're not sitting there with your trailer hanging out waiting to, to turn one way or another.
Are, are they looking at expanding the turn lanes and everything at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay, cause like, for instance, the one on the Woods Rutten is not.
Right.
Adequate, when you're going east, it's way too short and it's not wide enough, and you see people with campers there and it gets awful. And people don't change lanes, man.
Yeah.
It's bad, it needs to be, it needs to be wider, it's mean, like, come, you don't like that, so like, you see it, it's too, yeah.
So I, I, I think they're taking a lot of public guidance, public comments and.
That's what the process is for.
Right, I think it's scheduled for a twenty twenty-four construction period.
Okay.
But I think that's next, next Tuesday at six, six o'clock, something like that.
I know, I talked to the surveyor out there last summer. And he was an independent surveyor, one of the state, he provided that out.
Other private, yeah.
And I said, what's wrong with this highway? He says, there's way too many crossovers and he was, there's way too many, way too many, you know. So, like you said, Adam, the answer is frontage road.
Well, when, when everything was put in, it was piecemeal.
Piecemeal, yeah, yeah.
So it was, it was, okay, this development's gonna happen, all right, well, we need front, or we need, we need an honor after the highway, so they just stuck one in and then.
They're still doing that.
Then they just kept piecemealing it, and then there was, there was no corridor plan for, there should have been fr- frontage roads the whole way and it should have been, we're gonna put access here. And I understand that that's how that happens, you know, but let's fix it.
Yeah.
I first got on the commission engineer, state engineer, he thought, you probably remember that, he's out of his county's responsibility, he's with frontage road, no, that's, I'll get it.
More state.
And he looked at me like, you didn't argue, you knew I was right, then he never brought it up again. We, we were there, we were there.
Well, we're all like that, pleaded them.
See, they'll build them, they want us to take them over.
Yeah.
Put the one in front of my place, the state does that, so I mean, there's, there's places where they're doing frontage, but.
Really? Do that one up? Interesting.
That's counties?
That's state.
That's the states at frontage.
Both sides.
Both sides.
Interesting.
Enable that.
They plowed it, they sanded it, they did everything, straightened it, paved it.
Yeah, there's.
Indeed.
Be a good media, I think, I don't need to, take a lot of input over the years.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Thank you. We're just, we're just talking.
This is. Where did I get this?